Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectmen's Meeting for December 3rd, 2015. First item on the agenda, a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
We approve the agenda.
With one, if I could make one adjustment to that, if you don't mind, Bill?
No, we're all.
If we could move item five, five A, under new business, the executive session, up to right under the approval of the, approval of the minutes. First thing.
Seconded.
Uh, seconded.
All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to Title A, Title 30A, MRS 2705, Section 1B5.
Uh, seconded.
All in favor? We're back from executive sec, session at 6:14.
Make a motion, we come out of executive session?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Okay. No background or anything?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Based on our executive session, I'm gonna make a motion that we suspend an employee of the Town of Acton.
I second it. All in favor? Opposed? Bill?
I thought I wasn't voting.
You have to abstain.
Oh, I abstain.
Okay. All right.
Motion fails, correct?
Yes, motion fails. One for, one against, and one abstain. All right, uh, floor is yours, Jen.
Just a couple of quick things, and then hopefully we can get to fire and rescue. Thank you guys for coming and waiting so long. First item that I have on my agenda is resignation from the town clerk's office. Um, I'm gonna take a minute to say yes, again, for the, I think, fourth time in a row. The Town of Acton has done a nice job training, a very good assistant.
Jennifer has done a nice job.
Thank you. And after a year being trained, and she has all of her certifications, she can be left alone, she has met a lot of the criteria and standards, she's done extremely well. Dale Fisk has given me a written letter of resignation because she received a full-time job in the Town of Lebanon that pays $3 more an hour, that has state retirement, that has 401K, and that has health and dental. So, I am looking for the board to accept Dale's resignation with regret Tuesday, next Tuesday, December 8th, will be her last day. She technically did give me two weeks' notice, but because of Thanksgiving, you guys haven't met, so I'm sorry to see her go, but certainly understand.
Make a motion, we accept her resignation with regret.
Seconded.
All in favor? Because this has happened so many times, made a call to the state, and the Town of Acton has state retirement for all the school employees, the teachers, the ed techs, the janitors, and everybody else down there is eligible for it, and we were told that the town employees were not eligible. Um, I don't know where the information came from, but the woman I talked to today said the Town of Acton is a municipality, and we are eligible to be on the main state retirement. So, package is being sent, so what I'd like to recommend is next Thursday, after we get through with business, if we could go into a working session and go through that, because we're only allowed to join twice a year, we have to vote by January 1st, and she's gonna send us the actual language that we have to vote on, or June 15th. June 15th would be too late for the town meeting, so I suggest that we discuss it in order to keep the good employees we have, and then we can put it into the budget this year, and go through Warren and Finance, and go to the floor as a separate article to see if the town will vote to allow the town employees to go on main state retirement. It won't be available to all the employees, because the employees have to have a minimum of 25 hours per week, every week of the year, in order to be eligible for it. So, I'd like to recommend that we do that next week.
Sounds like a very good idea.
And I had them send a copy to Jen, so Jen will get you guys' copy, so you can look it over this week. We have 11 options, and she did suggest that there is a separate option for the Fire Department. I think it would be a great thing to have for our new Fire Chief, to get somebody good in there, so we can look at that. And then there's a different policy that would be for our office staff here, for our code enforcement, and Jennifer and Michelle would be the eligible ones here at the town hall.
I think it sounds great, and we definitely have to do something, so.
Okay.
Like I said, the employees we have are very valuable, and we wanna hang on to them, so.
So, if you could send that out to Bill and Ed, and we can discuss it next week after the regular meeting?
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Peter Smith, the Fire Chief. Might be a little petty, but I just wanna get my two cents in. I'm not resigning as a Fire Chief, I'm actually retiring as a Fire Chief, so, as petty as it is, and you've done a lot of training on me as well, but it's been much more than a year, I've been here 34 years. So, if I may, I'd like to just read off my retirement letter. Board of Selectmen, Town of Acton, Maine, gentlemen and lady, this letter is to inform you that I am retiring from the position as the Acton Fire Chief effective January 1st, 2016. I would like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation and gratitude to my fellow firefighters and officers for their commitment and dedication in support of me in the role of the Fire Chief. I'd also like to take this time to thank Jennifer Rue, the clerk, she's helped me tremendously, the treasurer, Michelle Romney, and the Board of Selectmen, as well as all the citizens of Acton for the support that they've given me. I have enjoyed every moment of being with the Acton Fire Department ever since I began 34 years ago, as the chief, as the chief of the junior firefighters. Since that time, I've held the roles of lieutenant, assistant chief, and chief. We have created one of the most successful departments in this community. It is with great pride that I have served. My decision to retire as chief has been made after much thought and deliberation. Having discussed this with my family, considering my personal goals and my continuing journey as an individual, I believe this is the right decision for me. I have given this department my best over the years, and I am proud of my accomplishments. I look forward to continue my service with the Acton Fire and Rescue, but in a different capacity. Service to the people of this community has progressed from a completely volunteer department to one in which there will be a staffing of both fire and EMS. With this significant transition, it is clear that the position as a dedicated, full-time chief is warranted to fulfill the duties now required by the citizens of Acton. This is an opportune time for me to retire and for someone else to lead this department. So, with that being said, I talked to the Selectmen back in October about retiring. I made a recommendation, because we have budgeted for two career staff people, and out of the, one of those staff people, I recommended to make that a full-time Fire Chief. This is a very busy job for a volunteer person. I dedicated myself too much, I overdid it, and it's time for me to step down. New heights are coming to Acton, new growth is coming to Acton, and we need somebody here all the time that can put in the time needed for the citizens. With that being said, I did a lot of work on trying to come up with a job description, a posting, all kinds of stuff, so if I may, I'll pass them out to you.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, sir.
Again, I wanna make it very clear, I'm a firefighter, I'm not much for writing, so please mark it up as much as you wish, and give it back to me, and we can discuss it. Thank you.
Is it possible for you to send it to me electronically?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Peter, before you go, um, we need to move on this, because you're gonna be all done on January 1st, and I know you have somebody that's gonna take over on January 1st. Would you be willing to hold the chief's position on the committee until the new chief comes in? Because there's, there's one opening on the committee for the Fire Chief, correct?
As a retired Fire Chief, some way or else?
Yeah, that was like.
That was like out of house.
Mainly for an outside person.
No, 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 I'm not talking about, oh, there's not, the regular Fire Chief is not on the committee?
No.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood. Okay.
However, you bring up an excellent point, I have been working with the Assistant Chief, Dave Langley, shadowing him well over a month now on the roles and operations of the Fire Department. He's doing a very good job, and I made it very loud and clear that any help that he needs, I'm not giving up, I'm not quitting, I'm still gonna be on the Fire Department, I'm just dropping my levels for service, and, you know, doing my volunteer duty that I prefer to do to the citizens of Acton. So, in any case at all, any needs at all, I'm there to help the Assistant Chief out to continue going forward. The department will not fail, it's a good, strong department, we just need to go above and beyond before we start hiring the full-time staff and the PM staff, that's all.
Okay. Now, are, you're going to vote on your, your people from the Fire Department that are gonna be on that committee?
A monthly meeting is Monday night, the first Monday of the month, and that's where we'll get the three people that will be on the Fire Commission, yes.
Okay, and then we need a Selectman?
Correct.
Somebody from the community?
Correct.
Somebody from Warren and Finance?
Correct.
And what else?
The retired Fire Chief.
And you have somebody?
Or, not retired, an active or retired Fire Chief out of the Town of Acton, but we're looking for some other eyes to get in on this.
Okay. All right, so if they're gonna do theirs Monday, I recommend we do ours tonight, and we have this now, we get this out, move forward, and hopefully have a chief in place for February? Because.
I would think that would work.
Something that's gonna be coming up is, we're gonna be moving forward with the takeover of the ambulance and everything, so we need to really move fast on this. We're six months out from the vote, so we need to get it going, so if you can get your, the folks there, and if Jennifer, you can let the Warren and Finance, they need to pick somebody?
Yep, and get the word out, because the member at large will be voted on by the six-person commission. So, just, just say, Dave wants to come in, A, I wanna be on it, it's not an automatic being on, because we want, we're encouraging many people to come forward with some thought process and ideas, and meet with the committee, and sell themselves to be on the committee, because we really want a good committee, we want a good Fire Chief to be picked first time around, so.
All right. And did you find a way for us to advertise this, so to get a wide?
I did. I apologize, if it's not in that packet, I'll definitely get it to you, yes.
Okay, and then we'll get this out.
Yeah, before you, a couple things, and I know the board meant to do this beforehand, but as soon as you finish writing that letter, I mean, I'm reading the letter, on behalf of everybody at the Town of Acton, Peter, we owe you a lot of gratitude, and thank you for everything that you've done for this town.
I gotta thank my father, of course, he's the one that dragged me in here all these years ago. I started officially 34 years ago, but as you know, I was here as a baby, sleeping up on the hose bed during the meetings, that's how it used to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Before we move on from this, I'd like to, if you're interested, I'd like to nominate Ed.
Oh, wait, so, I think before you.
We're gonna accept, I think.
Accept, no.
You're gonna accept his work.
You have to accept his retirement, all right, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Based on Chief Smith's letter, I'd like to make a motion that we accept his retirement effective the end of December or January 1st. The end of December, I guess, is the date.
With regret.
Yes, definitely with regret, and I'm the one who threw him into that position, so I guess I can be the one to say thank you so much.
Second?
I was ready, what's the motion?
To accept his retirement.
Okay, yeah, second.
All in favor? Thank you again, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
And I apologize for that resignation warrant on there, that's the only warrant that had been given to me over the last few months, so I will make sure that, yeah, and we can, there's plenty of places to advertise it.
I'm not, before you, I think I know what you're gonna say, the next, did you catch the part in the ordinance that the one person off the street that you guys are gonna be looking for is actually voted on by those six people?
That's what we just talked about.
Right, I just wanna make sure.
Yes.
You heard that?
Okay.
So, do we want, if we're gonna start getting?
But the Selectmen also would have to be a member and be sworn in, right? This is a liaison job, so I was gonna nominate the Selectmen's position.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were doing the open position.
I make a motion when we nominate Ed Walsh to be the Selectman on the commission?
Seconded.
All in favor? All right.
Appreciate it.
And as soon.
I may?
Yeah.
I know you had some concerns, and you was really hoping I'd be on the board, the way this is written up with the, the commission, the three on the Fire Department will come back and communicate with our members, so it's not just a three on the Fire Department making all these decisions, it's a collaborative group of the whole department, so I just wanna make that clear that.
You're gonna have somebody from Rescue, and somebody from the ambulance, and?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So, definitely, you know, we'll have, I will, a lot of people have good input still to go forward for the process, we're not, they're not going to be in the dark over there, so I just wanna make sure that was very clear.
Okay, and if we can, how are we gonna call this meeting together? I imagine you're gonna have to elect a chairman and everything else, so we need to get the meeting together right away, so we can get somebody from the community, and?
Yep.
We can get the applications start coming in, and?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm assuming, and I hate to assume, but these are gonna be like open meetings, obviously, so anybody's welcome to come and sit down during the meetings.
Yeah, we're gonna have to tape them.
And, yeah, that's the other thing, we're gonna figure out who's in charge of that. They need to be posted.
Yep.
And they need to be filmed, so.
Yep, just try to make it very clear and clean and neat, right, first thing.
Whoever's in charge of doing that, needs to make sure they notify me, so I can get them posted accordingly.
So, while you're chief, if you can call the first meeting after you get your people, and we'll find out who's on Warren and Finance, and then if we know of anybody from the community that's interested, we'll let your committee know, and then you guys decide how, you know, who's gonna be in charge of the committee from there on.
The coalition will, not my guys.
No, no.
The Fire Commission will, I mean, yes, okay, yep.
Six out of seven.
The six.
Yep, yeah, excellent, thank you.
All right, thanks, Peter.
Okay, Jennifer, wanna come up and, well, um, so, as you guys know, Jennifer Oskato has been working diligently to help with this paperwork and the process of actually getting the Fire and Rescue merger done. We have worked together and gotten updates over the last few weeks. We did run into what we thought was a bit of a temporary problem yesterday, so we made the decision after speaking to the, to the chair, to sit down with the town's attorney today, and try to iron out what those, what those issues were, and what's stopping us from finishing this consolidation, and getting everything transferred over, and just trying to, you know, move forward for the town with this. So, we had a successful meeting, I thought, with the town's attorney today. Shortly before we went in there, we actually got some information from our billing company that answered a lot of the questions, so I'm gonna just kind of explain where I think we're at. Jen, you jump in if I'm incorrect, and we'll kind of go from there. So, at this point, what is, what they're waiting for is, the 855B needs to be filed with the state. What we're waiting for on the 855B is for two names to be placed on there, one essentially is gonna be somebody from the town to, that's gonna have the authority to remove names, change names, make accounting changes, and then the other name is Jennifer Seer, based on her being the current rescue, her name is already tied to everything, and then once the new Fire Chief comes in, you know, and he, he or she figures out their hierarchy, you know, their positions, we'll make changes if necessary, but, so we need to get those, both those names on there, and we need to get the documents signed by those two individuals, right?
Correct.
As soon as that happens, we are just about ready to, Bill Catanze is putting the final touches on the serial numbers of all of the equipment, Attorney Warren is writing up the transfer of ownership. We are hopeful to transfer all ownership altogether at once with one document. If that can't happen, based on some, some loose ends, we are gonna propose that as soon as those serial numbers are in our hands, you guys are going to, they're gonna at least transfer over the ambulance and everything in it, because as soon as that happens, and we can send them, and we can register the ambulance in the town's name, we're good. Everything's golden, everything goes to the state, they're telling us that it's gonna take up to 30 days, they felt confident that we'd get the Medicare, Medicaid numbers in that amount of time, they told us we could back the bill up to 90 days, right?
Correct.
So, we feel like we're in good shape, that's what we're waiting for.
Yes.
Do you wanna add to that? I know I summed up three weeks of your work, I'm sorry, but.
That's where we're at.
Okay.
I would say that, did you all have a chance to read the email, the update, or?
They got the update.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they got that yesterday.
So, I don't need to go over that, then?
Yeah, I mean, it was, this was the email that you, and she worked hard to put together, I forwarded you guys that yesterday, I know Bill mentioned that he read it, you weren't able to print it, but you read it. This was really a lot of backing as to why her and I felt like we needed to go and get some attorney advice on it, and we thought as of yesterday that there was no way we could get the ambulance in our name and still bill under the association, so.
And it wasn't until 13 minutes before Jen and I met with the attorney, while we were sitting there, I got the text message saying, I was on the phone with Medicare, this is what I found out, and then we did the conference call to make sure that things were clear.
Exactly.
The only other thing I want to follow up on is that in the beginning of the process, when we were talking with Tammy for the billing, that she had sent the application, not application, the contract for her services for the Town of Acton, as well as the setup fee, and she quote, she wanted me to make sure, she, I clarified for her, 'cause she said 6.5%, but it's actually 7%.
Okay.
Which seems to be in the running of the average pricing for these billing agencies, she's right in line with it. She has been very good at responding and guiding the process, but she wanted to make sure that it was clear that she had made the mistake in that, what it was, and I told her that it was fine, because that's what she had represented before.
Right, I don't think the, the board has actually signed a contract with the new billing company yet, anyway, so.
No.
I didn't share that number with them, I was just, in the conversation, I was just curious what it was, but.
And that's what I thought, but I also wanted to address that, once this happens, there is the setup fee, and I, I don't recall, I think it was $1,200, I don't recall off the top of my head specifically, but that, that's what I think it was.
I mean, we, we clearly would not have gotten through this process, and not that we're there yet, but we will not get through this process without Tammy, I mean, we owe that billing company, who has done a fine job for Acton, the ambulance association, they haven't had any issues with them, the payments come in quickly, they come in, you know, so we definitely owe them some, you know, at least get on our feet and get going, whether we decide to eventually go out to bid, I don't even know if we'd have to, but, you know, we certainly, those numbers are, you know, are doable, because she's been phenomenal.
Yeah, she's done good, and the only other thing, there was just a couple other things that I need to follow up on for the state license, when Jen, the Chief Seer gets back, I need to meet with her, and then I wanted just some direction from the board as to, once this paperwork is done, do you want me to help try to get things organized, or if there's other things that you want me to do, I'm happy to help, I know you're shorthanded, so I'm happy to step up if you need that.
One of the things, and, so, and I think where we left it today, and just so that we're all on the same page, when, when Jen and I met with Attorney Warren, we not only had conference calls with Tammy from the billing, we followed up with Chief Smith to make sure that if we had to do a bill of sale immediately, what did we need, and we had a conversation, conference call with Bill Catanze, to find out exactly where we're at, so we've covered all of our bases. Jen's gonna, what Jen needs from you tonight is the information of who the second, who the other individual, the top individual is going to be to, that can make changes to the account, and she has the documents, she's gonna essentially get back to Tammy, update those names, get both parties signed, and?
So, you could email me tomorrow if you need to do that, that's fine, I can update her, and I'll just CC you in the email, so we're clear on the chain.
I, I'd like you to stay on until it's completed, and it's all passed over to the town, if you could.
Okay.
You've done so much work, I, if you walk away now, I don't know what will happen, so I'd appreciate if you'd stay involved.
I will tell you, I, it has been more of a task than I expected.
Yeah.
So, I don't think, I don't think that the office could have done it with the amount of time, 'cause even just the amount of time that I'm putting in, it feels like a significant, and some of it, I felt like I was chasing my tail, because, you know, I couldn't get the information, and my other responsibilities, so it's, it's been a task.
We can't thank you enough for everything you've done.
Thank you.
So, if you do need anything, just email me, let me know, and I'll follow up as best as I can.
Jen will be in touch with you.
And you can, I mean, you can just give her the direction, I mean, we spoke individually, so there's not, about the 855 now, so she can take that with her.
Yeah, I make a, need a motion or just a recommendation?
I think it's just a rec, I mean, motions are good, but recommendations.
I make a recommendation that we put Jen on as the other person.
Jen Rue.
Yeah.
Too many Jens in this. Yes, I highly agree with that.
Okay.
I, I think that that's a good, because she's been around, she's not going anywhere, she's, now that she's familiarized with the process.
Did you see the Lebanon numbers? Just kidding, just kidding, just kidding, go ahead, sorry.
We're trying to get retirement.
Thank you, Jen, I appreciate those kind words. So, I'll be in contact with it, you'll get those forms updated, if you want, because I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna need to sign them.
I'll just.
Yeah, and I'll, and I can get Chief, Chief Seer to sign hers as well. Yeah, tomorrow. Yes, again, I mean, we couldn't, I mean, you said it, but we certainly couldn't have done it without her, she's, you know.
No, absolutely not.
All right. Next on the agenda is CEO training and vacation request. We've had, we had some conversations, I think, with all of our department heads, just to kind of make sure that, even though the, the internal department heads don't answer to me as office manager, it's, it's important to notify me, so that I can notify the board when training and things are going on, so with that said, I've got a few updates for you. Ken didn't realize we had wanted that from him, so now he certainly has come forward. One of these, he was actually dated on 11/20, you haven't had a meeting, but it was actually today, he spent some time with Mike Morris in Waterboro on a Chapter 1,000 class, so that was, that was today. He's got a few more coming up that he signed up for, this one's free, it's on January 21st, it is an MBOIA annual meeting, and then he's got on Monday, December 14th, and December 15th, these are also both free in Portland, looking at changes to the building codes, IRC and IBC, so you can find out for those.
Yeah, I didn't realize that Ken has to constantly take courses, just like teachers do, in order to keep his certification, so that's why he's taking these to, he has to have so many credit hours or CEUs every year in order to keep his certification as a code enforcement officer, so, and that's glad, I'm glad he's doing all that.
And then he has some, a vacation request, so he's in training on Monday and Tuesday, he would like, like to take Wednesday and Thursday off, he's got plenty of flex and vacation time, if you approve that.
Just sign it.
Got a 7 o'clock meeting over there now.
Thanks.
Good night.
Thank you, Peter.
Good night.
Yep, how we going?
Only need to, I'm not necessarily the department head, am I?
No.
So, we all set with that?
Thank you. I have a resident that inquired with my office as to whether or not we had any idea where the TV at the gym went.
Somebody took it?
It's gone, I'm not gonna make any, she asked me to, to ask the board, I was pretty confident that I would have heard from one of you if you, you know, if you knew anything about it, but I'm putting it out there, the TV is missing, we're certainly not saying that anyone took it, it must have been donated in the first place, so maybe the donation expired, maybe, it's not, it stopped working, if anybody knows what happened with the TV, I've got a couple of residents that are just kinda, before they decided if they're gonna purchase another one, just kind of wanna know the status of it. So, you guys know nothing, right? The next thing I was hoping we could talk about are the Board of Selectmen meetings, and the, the office and the staff, and kind of getting a game plan with the resignation of my latest assistant, and I just wanna make clear, I mean, I said this was the fourth one in a row, just for the record, we have now four well-trained employees in York County, I don't want people to think that they're just running off. We have April, that works for the Town of Sanford, still today, doing a very good job. We have Shelley, that works for the Town of Kenny Monckport, and Lauren, works for the city of Biddeford, so.
She's in Biddeford, though?
She's in Biddeford, yep. So, Dale will join them in Lebanon, so. All right, so with all that said, we kinda need to talk about how we're gonna handle these meetings. I mean, you guys have kind of said and been on board with... You like the idea of keeping it all, you know, having the open forum conversation, rather than the, you know, beforehand and then coming in. That was the discussion. We've talked a couple of times about going back. Obviously, I can't be in two places at once. So, the proposal that I'm hoping that you'll consider is changing the selectman meeting nights to Tuesday. For the remainder of December, the next... So, this will be Dale's last Thursday. The next two Thursdays, Michelle has offered to work. The two Thursdays after that are both holidays, so there'll be no meetings anyways. I'm proposing that the selectmen start meeting on Tuesdays in January. It would be January fifth. And the thought behind that is that the office is open from nine to four. Essentially, I'll stay. The meeting takes place at five. You know, other than evenings like this, that we have executive sessions, you know, we're generally out of here by five thirty, quarter or six, so we'd all be leaving together.
Okay.
Until... Because even if we turned around and hired someone tomorrow, it's gonna be, you know, six months to a year before they can be left alone in the office. And I just think that Tuesdays will work better. I will adjust my schedule. Thursdays, I'm generally here by one-ish, depending on what's going on. And if I'm staying late on Tuesdays, you probably won't see me roll in until quarter or four. I mean, I'm gonna even it out somehow, so... How do you guys feel about Tuesdays?
I make a motion. We change some meetings to five o'clock on Tuesdays after the first of the year.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Eric, do Tuesdays work for you?
They do?
Great.
So, they'll still be live, and we'll start fresh on the fifth. So, I'm gonna start advertising that. The more we can get out there, the better.
It starts at five.
Five o'clock. Okay, planning board alternate appointment. The last couple of weeks, we have talked about the opening on the planning board. We've moved people up, just kinda done some shifting. We've advertised on cable everywhere that we have one alternate position open. The word was that they needed to notify me. I got one letter. It's from a lady named Leslie Berlin, and she sent me an email saying, "Good morning, Jennifer. Per our conversation yesterday, I'm interested in serving as an alternate on the planning board. I've owned property in Acton for over ten years and am now a resident. Please let me know the next step." So, I asked her, you know, what interested her about the planning board and if she could give me a little more, you know, information. So, she said that she's interested in the position to learn more about the town, how it works, and to be of service to the people of the town. When doing some renovations to our home years ago, we needed to get planning board approval for the variance, and the process and decision-making fascinated me. So, we had had conversations with the planning board chair, that if they were X amount, or they were rolling in to jump on this committee, that maybe we would include them and have meetings. I'm not sure what direction you guys wanna take.
Well, it's been over a month now since we've advertised, correct?
Yeah, two and a half weeks, I'd say.
Okay, so, we only got one response. I think we just accept it.
I think under this circumstance, I think that would work.
Well, I just happen to have an appointment typed up, in case that was your decision.
Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Leslie Berlin... Berlin? How do you pronounce it?
Berlin is what I'm going with.
Berlin. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine hereby appoint you as a planning board alternate member within and for the Municipality of Acton until June of 2017, given under our hand this third day of December.
A motion.
I move that we appoint Leslie Berlin to the position of planning board alternate member.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Next. A couple of weeks ago, I forwarded you guys an email that... I forwarded you an email of a certified letter we got in the mail from MetroCast. It was of grave concern, when I originally read it, as it was to Mike Corey. We both, without speaking to one another, immediately contacted Ed Merrill, who is the president that oversees this. There's a lot of legal terms in it, and I sent it to you guys so you could see it, but at the end of the day, what we really wanted to know... The way I read it is that it was getting rid of the Channel Twelve, the APAT, PEG channel. So, that is not true. So, I just wanted to clarify, because they are doing some advertisements now publicly on what changes they're doing with their Channel Twelve. But I spoke to him, and Mike spoke to him. Mike also sent an email that I forwarded you guys, that basically says, "I got in touch with the contract, and he clarified that this does not impact APAT. We are still under contract until 2018." And then he gives a brief summary of the contract, the franchise agreement, and available providers. So, things are going to change, and I hope you... If you didn't have the chance to read that letter, you know, advise you or recommend that you do. But they are slowly... Looks like, you know, getting rid of these... Some of these channels. But, you know, we got in writing from the individual that clearly says that we have a ten-year contract, and it's not going to expire till March of eighteen, and we're good until then.
And none of the changes have anything to do with the contract. It's just about what they're showing on the TV, correct?
I believe they're getting rid of some of the channels.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We just have a contract with them to provide the service, and then the individuals decide whether they wanna take it or not, but we don't have any... There's nothing in the contract that they have to provide so many channels or anything.
No, but the contract is about Channel Twenty-Six.
Uh-huh.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. I think that some of those channels...
Oh, this is just for APAT, it's not for the rest?
Right, no, no. This is for the PEG channel.
Okay.
That's what the letter was about. So, they were doing... You know, they've got... If you've ever flipped through and seen some of the blank ones, like Sanford has Twelve, there's Twenty-Six, there's Twenty-Seven, there's a few different ones. I think they're getting rid of some of those PEG channels.
Oh, okay.
But Acton... I mean, that's really what the letter said, but what he's reiterating is that you're really in the middle of a contract, and we're gonna honor that. And we'll see what happens down the road.
Okay.
So, it was the actual channel. And then I only... I just wanted to make sure you saw the emails from Mike. He's been really busy with some school issues, and he caught up on his September, October, and November monthly reports from APAT, and just shows you all the videos that he's produced and slides. And wondered if you guys had any questions? He's not meeting with you anymore, really. I think that we had talked too about, maybe after the first of the year, especially where you're gonna be on Tuesdays now, and the town hall's not gonna be open, that we can get on some sort of schedule with these department heads and, you know, get them to come in and present to you, you know, fifteen minutes. Library door. They asked me to follow up. You guys got an email from them. Ted, Bill, and Ed. A while back, Richard Neal donated a door control door closer for the entrance to the library. It was originally at the transfer station, I believe. Oftentimes, the door flies open, startling patrons, and occasionally being slammed by the wind on the railing. She wants to know if we can have someone install it.
Mr. Neal took that down when he donated the electric thing at the transfer station, and then his idea was to save it and put it on the library. I thought he was going to do that.
Oh, you thought he was gonna do the maintenance work, go behind it?
That's what he said, yeah. Yeah, it was his idea. He took it down off of the transfer station when he donated that electric door opener, and he wanted to save that, and he thought it was perfect for the library, so I assumed he was putting it up.
Are you telling me to check with Mr. Neal and see if he can install that door?
The door opener, yeah, because he took it down from the fire station and kept it to put on the library. So, it was... I would assume that he was gonna put it up, too.
So, that's just one of those hydraulic door closers?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, remember, up at the fire... Yeah, I mean, up at the transfer station, you just have to open the door, and he decided we need an electric door.
Yep, and he hooked it up to four forty or something.
Yeah, burnt the whole thing out. But we thank him for his generous donation.
Yeah.
So, if Mr. Neal is unable to do that, Mr. Wallace will do that?
I'll take a look at it.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, today I got a education on winter moths. Who knew? And this is actually very important, once I... When she, you know, she told the whole story about it. But essentially, let me wind it down for you. The Department of Agriculture and Conservation and Forestry would like permission to hang some winter moth pheromone traps on town properties, on a couple of oak trees. This will only happen in... For the months of December and January. They have, based on past studies, found that this particular invasive forest instinct... Insect is in Acton. Try not to laugh.
They're all over the place.
Okay. Is it this particular... Because there's a lot of different types of winter moths, I learned today. And there is... There's only one that's invasive. I mean, there's one particular one that they're looking for, so they have this...
I don't know how you tell the difference.
Well, I can tell you off camera. They... She's explaining that to me. But there is a trap with this stuff inside it, you know, the female that will attract, and they wanna hang it on your tree. They wanna hang it on a tree. They're just looking for that permission for a couple of months. You basically won't even know it's there.
Where's it going? Right out here someplace?
I asked her if she had a particular oak tree in mind, and she said, "No." They basically look at a map, pick a town property, find a nice oak tree, and hang it up.
Sure. Mind what I mean?
Bill?
Yeah, no, it's fine, man.
Hey, thank you. All right, winter speed limit surveys. I have some fabulous news. I called again my new friend, Steve Landry, that wants to... That is the gentleman that's supposed to be in charge of these survey signs, and he said to me, "Oh, actually, the gentleman you wanna speak to is Tim Susi." I said, "Really?"
Who is the one that we originally sent this to?
I said, "Funny you should say that. What is your connection to Mr. Susi?" And he said, "Well, I'm his supervisor." I'm like, "Perfect." On December eleventh of 2014, we sent him a certified letter, and he did explain to me the process of this, and I do understand that the towns throughout the state overwhelm them. The average turnaround time is nine to twelve months, so they're right on track, just so you know. And it was even better timing, because Mr. Susi is planning on being in Acton tomorrow. He's going to come to the town hall and introduce himself, and certainly, we're going to focus on Youngs Ridge Road, as the board, you know, requested. And I'm gonna see how many of these other roads we can sneak in while he's in town. But he will be here tomorrow.
You put Dan in touch with him, too? Is Dan working tomorrow?
Deputy Shaw. I will have to check his schedule, but if he is, I'll definitely make sure that he...
Because he had some concern about some roads, so while we got... While we have the state here, let's have Dan talk to him and talk about where his concerns are. I know we listed them all. I think...
Canal, H Road, Nathan Road, New Bridge Road, Peacock Road, Point Road, Sam Page Road, and Youngs Ridge Road.
If I remember right, he gave input at the time. It was the two road commissions and Dan Shaw.
Right, and we put in there that although we've had numerous requests, we're asking that you address really Youngs Ridge Road. If you have time to do nothing else, look at that one.
Okay.
But I'll check with Deputy Shaw and see if any of that's changed, and see if they can connect tomorrow as well.
So, the guy we sent it to and began with was the right guy, but everybody...
He went to mechanic position for a while, but apparently, he's back, and I didn't ask questions. I was just happy to hear that he was coming this way. Abandoned property, I told you that we would leave this on the agenda until we... It was satisfied. I did get some information tonight that one of the properties, not the one that you're familiar with and we've been discussing, is actually not, has stopped abiding by what they were doing. So, you're gonna get more information on that next week.
They didn't finish... They didn't complete what they said they were doing?
No, they didn't. Right, they didn't. So... And as far as the one that we're familiar with, that you've got the complaints on, the only update here is to let you know that the next deadline that the individual had was December fourth, to remove all of the discarded scrap, junk, lumber, and to remove a variety of other things from the property. The deadline's tomorrow, so we'll have to update you next week on that, because we don't know if it's done yet.
It wasn't done as of today.
Fee schedule, code enforcement, and he is available, should you want him to come up. Well, actually, we're going just about to a planning board meeting. They're looking at making three minor changes to the land use fee schedule. This was really prompted by a new road. He wants to put in a three hundred dollar fee for the new road, really because of the amount of time they have to put into plotting it and notifying the neighbors. There's fees associated with it. The fire protection sprinkler system, he's looking at adding a twenty-five dollar fee. The purpose of that really is so that the town is aware of it. He said, you know, he used a recent building that we have that got a new fire system, I mean, a sprinkler system. That went through, all through the state. I mean, he had no idea. They didn't have to pull a plumbing permit or anything, so the only way that he's gonna be able to be aware of those things is if there's some sort of minor fee. The other one is for... You already had fees for the thirty percent expansion. He is recommending that you add a thirty-five dollar fee for the twenty percent lot coverage calculation.
Okay.
So, when they come in, they sit down, they figure out if they've used twenty percent of the whole property. That's his recommendation, if you wanna look at that.
Sounds fair. Want to make a motion?
And he is here, if you wanna speak to him about it, if I...
No, I'm good.
All right, I'm gonna give you one that's not highlighted, if you decide to sign it.
Want to make a motion? Sure, I'll make a motion that we adjust the fee schedules as discussed.
Sog on.
All in favor?
Yep, I have... I'm gonna scoot down to announcements. Two thousand sixteen dog licenses available. I'm gonna keep beating that one in. The annual tree lighting, this is actually this Saturday. So, this Saturday from five to eight. Encourage everyone to come and join, bring the little ones. And I just wanted to take a minute to just publicly thank that everybody that's made donations, the neighbors helping neighbors. I know that for anybody that watches these, last few weeks, as the holidays come, I've been asking and asking, and we've been rounding up all of the customers. We have... Well, before Thanksgiving, we had about six hundred dollars in that account. We did have three families that we made baskets for Thanksgiving, so that was a little[1608.95]